Are we all set? All right. Okay, great. So let me call to order a special meeting of the Board of Selectment for Tuesday, December 6, 2001. The first item on our agenda is review and approve the explanatory text of referendum question pursuant to section nine dash three sixty-nine B of the Connecticut general statutes. And I think each one of you has before you a copy of nine three sixty-nine B of the Connecticut general statutes that authorizes the explanatory text. So Jerry, you want to just go over that?
Yeah, the statute, as far as referendums are concerned, allows the town to have, and we've done this in the past, I've just learned, it allows the town to put up explanation, put out explanations for people who come in and vote, and the town clerk is allowed to blow this up and put it on three or four billboards as people walk into the polling place. The one issue that we have to be careful of is that the statute says you can do these explanatory tests, but you can't be advocating a position either way, yes or no? So I was very concerned about making sure we didn't advocate, but also wanting to get a fair, and Stephanie, who is the clerk, who is in charge of doing this, so it was working with her, and I have to approve it, wanted to make sure it didn't, it didn't get to the point where it was advocating anything. So to be extra careful, I sent a copy of it up the other day to the State Elections Enforcement Commission, and I talked to a, got a hold of a guy, there's actually a guy in charge of referendums there, who took a look at it. He made one suggestion, I took his suggestion, and he said, as a whole, this is not advocating, and it looks fine. He said, I can't guarantee that somebody files, doesn't file a complaint, but he thought there was no basis to file a complaint. I sent him the, I took his, I made us changes, and we made one other change. We just put in there, in the first paragraph, the polls will be open on December 13th for voters to vote yes or no on the sale. He said that was fine, and I sent him an email today which says, because I want to make sure we're doing it the right, here is the final explanatory text that we've voted on tonight by the Board of Selectment. The text will be used at the polls for explanatory purposes for voters, as well as mailed to all Woodbridge voters before the referendum, so long as the Board of Selectment approves it tonight. The only changes are the, on the enclosed, of, enclosed from the original that I sent you yesterday, mine, and we added a sentence about voting yes or no, and the first paragraph made a reference to the statute in the last paragraph. I also made the change you suggested in paragraph three. Thank you for your help in this, and I said very truly yours. So I, I've covered ourselves, I think, as best as we can, and he's indicated that it's not, and he didn't call me back after he got that email, so I assume everything is fine. And the statute also, in addition to allowing you to have the explanatory text at the polling place, he, I specifically asked him whether, if the Board of Selectment approved an expenditure for a mailing, just so people in town would have another notice that there is a referendum, that they should come out and vote on December 13th. And he said, yes, the statute does allow you to do that, so both those things are before you, it's got to be approved, the expenditure of approximately, I think a mailing costs this, Jerry, about fifteen hundred dollars, is that approximately? The Board of Selectment has to approve the expenditure, both for mailing and for the printing of this piece of paper. That's it.
Okay. So with that as a background, we, do you have any questions about the procedure, anybody under the statute? Okay. So then the next thing we have to take up is the text itself, which you have before you. Does anyone have any questions or suggestions?
I actually had a thought. You know, it's a nuance. But I wonder if the first sentence, your big town of Woodbridge has received a letter of intent for Toll Brothers for the purchase of approximately, as opposed to to purchase. And if you want my-
Is there this thing?
If you want my reason, I'll tell you.
Yours sounds better than mine, but in addition-
Oh, then just go ahead and do that on that basis.
Say it again?
The town of Woodbridge has received a letter of intent from Toll Brothers for the purchase of approximately, et cetera, et cetera, or expressing a desire to purchase approximately, blah, blah, blah. In other words, the direction of all of this is coming from the Board of Selectment. This makes it sound like it's coming from Toll Brothers. And, and their letter of intent is actually in response to the direction that the town is going. So I think it doesn't read that way. So I, I think it should say the town of Woodbridge has received a letter of intent from Toll Brothers for the purchase of, which I think is completely neutral. It's, it's a nuance.
We can make that change if you want, right Jerry? That's easy enough to do.
Yep, I'll do that.
Okay. So would you read the new language, please?
The town of Woodbridge has received a letter of intent from Toll Brothers for the purchase of approximately seventeen plus slash minus acres of land from the town within the property known as the Country Club of Woodbridge. And that's the only change I have to make.
That's the only change.
Okay. Does everyone agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Any other suggestions or comments?
Do you want to say the polls will be open from six to eight on December 13, 2001?
It's at the top.
I know, it's at the top.
At the bottom.
Yeah, I was wondering.
No, he means in the sentence there.
In the sentence.
Oh, okay. Putting it in again.
Oh, okay.
December 13th from six AM.
We can do that, yeah.
Polls will be open on December 30th, from 2011, from-
From six AM to eight PM.
At the center. Right, at the center?
Yes.
What about the Center Gym? Because it's actually in the gym.
Okay.
Can I add that?
Yeah. We just want to make sure we-
So it's say, in the Center Gym?
I think, I think at the-
Well, that's our only polling place, right?
It is, it's in, it's in.
It's in, yeah, I think that's okay. But I, but I just want to make sure we don't go beyond one page, you still be able to get that in there, I think.
Everyone agree with that?
I'm sorry.
Any other comments or suggestions?
I think we need a vote.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone's had a chance to-
Oh, yeah, read it.
Yeah, good.
Number three didn't raise an eyebrow with anybody.
No, the, I actually meant, what he made me, that's the one thing he made me change, I had impact on age restricted housing, and I didn't have public schools, and for some reason, or he said, he said, that's the only sentence in the whole thing that might come, might be a little closer to advocacy, but if you put public schools in there, it's better. So I put public schools in there, I don't know what difference does it make, but it does, he asked me to put that in there.
Well, because that's really a statement of fact.
Right, right.
That, that part I can understand.
Yeah, he says, you know, that you, sometimes statement of facts could come close to advocacy, but he said that he thought this didn't overall. Again, he also said that somebody can always, you know, question it, but it looks like this is fine.
I'm sorry, who was this again?
Josh Foley, who's a lawyer with the State Election Enforcement Commission.
Okay.
And they have a specific division for referendums, fine referendums.
Well, can, can, can you add at the very, again, keeping it to one page, right here after Connecticut general statutes comment, after consultation with the State Election Enforcement now?
I don't think I want to, I, I sent-
Just trying to give it as much as possible.
Yeah, I know. That's what I was trying to do, and that's why I sent him the confirming email today. I sent him two emails back, actually. I don't think he would want it.
That's all the statute requires.
And that's all the statute requires.
Right.
Okay. Well, I, yeah. Okay, so what do we need to-
And the worst, worst comes to worst, if it's found to be advocacy, you got to pay, you guys have to come and pass the hat and pay the thousand dollars, that's the penalty.
And just one other suggestion. Sorry. And on number six, says the town of Wood, the town will retain ownership of the remaining approximately one hundred and eight, one hundred and thirty acres plus or minus of land at, it just sounds like, I was, I was thinking maybe just saying one hundred and thirty acres plus or minus of land known as the Country Club of Woodbridge, has open space, as opposed to at the Country Club of Woodbridge.
That's okay.
Yeah.
It's consistent.
Okay, that's fine. Known as the Country Club of Woodbridge, and that shouldn't take any more support.
No, it should just stand the same.
Yep.
That was it.
So if there are no further comments or suggestions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the explanatory text of referendum question to be held on December 13, 2011, at six AM to eight PM at the Center Gym, as amended here at our meeting.
Two more seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is-
May I just ask a question?
Yeah.
In lieu of having actual signatures on what goes to the printer, can we just do the typed names?
Yes, yeah.
And I leave Greg's name off because he's not here, or shall I just put Board of Selectmen?
No, I think, I'm going to contact him after this meeting to see if he has any objection to this or not.
All right.
And then I'll leave it up to him.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to review and approve an expenditure for printing, preparation, and mailing of materials concerning the referendum question, in addition to and including the explanatory text pursuant to nine dash three sixty-nine B of the Connecticut general statutes. And I think what is meant by that is we need to authorize the expenditure of, what is it, approximately?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars to mail, to prepare this explanatory text for exhibition at the polling place, and to distribute it to all residents of Woodbridge, all eligible voters on the referendum.
And Tony, what would the source of that funding be?
This funding comes out of the board's line of budget. Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Can I insert a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have any idea what that would cost?
About fifteen hundred bucks.
Oh, that's fifteen, just, oh, I got that fifteen was for the mailing.
Just the postage.
This is for everything?
Everything.
Well, the whole thing is, it's close to fifteen hundred bucks.
Supposed to be about fifteen hundred bucks.
Okay.
Printing, the mailing, and the postage.
Postage.
How long does it take, it'll, it'll get out prior to the referendum?
Right.
We're going to try and get it out, we're going to do everything to-
It's being sent first class, pre-sort.
Right.
Pre-sort, first class, pre-sort, right.
And it will already have the barcode on it. When it goes to the, the only holdup that we had on the other one was the, at the actual post office. Oh, okay.
We're going to try and do it tomorrow, but-
We're going to try and do it tomorrow.
Jerry said it might not do it, but we're going to try and get it done tomorrow.
Best we can get to tomorrow.
In the mail tomorrow.
Yeah.
Good.
First case Thursday morning.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Okay, so have we taken a vote on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is review and approve the RFP for the management of the Country Club of Woodbridge. And you have an RFP known as a, or a request for proposals, known as an RFP, for the operation management and maintenance of the Country Club of Woodbridge for golf, tennis pool, indoor restaurant, and banquet facilities. And Tony, you want to just highlight this?
Sure. Yep, this is an RFP for the management, as indicated, operation maintenance of the Country Club facility. And the RFP would seek a manager to manage the facility, and then we would pay the manager to manage the facility. So manager would be working for the town, and then we would pay the manager to help with, it says it in here, bookkeeping and all aspects, from bookkeeping to budget to maintenance, to general manager, the, all aspects of the facility. And we would collect the revenues and then pay the manager and the expenses associated with it. That's, that's sort of how that would work.
So this is going to be a salary position?
It would be a firm, most likely.
So it's going to be like a contract, we're going to pay this firm?
Correct.
There's no, it's not revenue based at this point?
At this point, it is not, right. And so, and then that firm would, then, within this structure, they have to have a staffing plan and a budget, and they have to sort of explain what they would do to staff it, how much that would cost, what the projection is on expenditures, it's all part of the package, there's to us.
And all the employees, would it be employees of this manager?
Right, correct. They would have employees of the management company, not of the town. And so that's what this seeks to do, and it gives the opportunity of golf, tennis, food and beverage, or some combination of that. And it gives a basically a background of the facility, and then we have a optional pre-bid conference, which we strongly encourage people to go to, that's on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth of December.
December. And the objective of that conference is to answer all questions that firms may have, and also to prevent, to basically give the information on it at the same time to everybody. And once that happens, there's, you sometimes get a list of questions, and you get all the attendees, and we can send out answers to questions to everybody who attended the meeting. And if you, there's a little timeline here on page two, and assuming we release the RFP tomorrow, the pre-bid conference is the nineteenth, then there's a deadline of questions, which is the thirtieth, and the proposals would be back January fifth, but basically a month, which we find is standard in this sort of RFP process. We did research on others that have had management RFPs, seemed pretty, pretty standard. And then the next selectments meeting, which is the eleventh, is the, around that date, would be the bid award, according to the schedule.
Just seems awful quick. And I only, I only got this today, so I haven't had a chance to go through the whole thing. It just seems, it just seems fast to me. I mean, I don't know how long it takes to, I don't know if there are any golf management companies out there that are chomping at the bit, but it just-
Well, our consultant tells us that this is, this is an appropriate length of time to do this, that this is, there are a number of these management companies that do this, and they have, basically have a computer form for doing this, putting together a bid on this, so it's, he expects to be, what, three or four, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah, there's no capital, real analysis in terms of capital expenditures and funding and all the other stuff that was involved in the, with these proposals.
Now, I didn't see anything in here, and I just kind of flipped through it, like I said. Was there anything in here about audited financial statements coming in with, with the bid?
We did ask, oh, no, but we asked to audit, we were going to audit, but once we, the bidder, but you know, something about-
You can't search this document for whatever reason.
Oh, you're saying something that-
But I, I-
There's a section here about financials.
The bidders are what they're required to produce prior to the award.
Yeah, there is a section on here about financials.
Right, I didn't see anything about an audited financial statement, or is that something we need? Because I know that was one of the issues we had previously, now being sure-
Auditing the financial statements of, of the-
Of the bidder, they'd be running, do they, do they have their financial resources to-
Well, that's different, see, if the bidder's paying you, it's much different than if you're paying them for a service.
Right, would they be paying us, right?
No, we're paying them.
We're paying them.
We collect the revenues and pay them. So they're not performing the job, you know, it's like a, it's like a service, as opposed to prior scenario, which was, we were getting paid, so it had to be some assurances that the firm had a financial wherewithal to be able to pay us.
Page sixteen, there's all-
I thought there's a reference to it.
General information bidder must provide as part of its proposal.
Can you get that part?
I know.
I mean, I was going all weekend, so I just got my, so I just got this today, so-
Well, they all got it today.
Okay.
Yep, I did too.
I just haven't had a chance to look at it.
I just got it today too, but-
Correct.
Three financial references, paragraph, almost last paragraph, last full, I was telling you on the last full paragraph, I'm sorry.
A list of respondents' litigation history for the past three years, provide any additional information on selected current and past clients, legal form of business organization such as sole proprietorship, et cetera.
But then, we will negotiate a contract with him or her, or the company.
Or it.
Or it, yeah. And so that can be one of the terms in there.
Can I just-
So I'm just trying to understand, we would hire a management company-
Right.
-to come in.
Pay them X dollars a month to do this.
And then anything, anything above?
And then this would be funded, the operation of the golf course would be funded through the revenue that's raised by memberships, greens fees-
And they'd be paid through the revenues of-
Correct, the revenue come to us, and then we would pay expenses.
And then if we, you know, we will realize more money than we're paying out in management fees.
Which I would hope we would be paying.
Hope we would, yeah. And so, and hopefully we, see how much we would make, we don't know that yet, but that monies could be applied towards the operation of the club.
Is that how the other, other towns do it?
New Haven does it that way, a lot of towns do it that way, New Haven's been very successful. This is one of the forms of management, this, yeah, this is, this, keep in mind, we're getting, we, there's no risk on the management company, so they have to be good and reputable and responsible, but as far as their financial capability, they're not really going on the hook at all with the situation we had before, that company was really taking all the risk, and we had to make sure that they were able, financially stable to pay us-
Right.
-if they weren't doing well at the golf course. This company is, that issue is not there with this company, because this company gets paid from us, we collect the revenues. But their expertise, we don't know, Ed doesn't have to go out and cut the grass, or you don't have to go out and do the tennis, these guys have expertise who run it for us and just give us a report every month.
Right, so I did notice that we had said, I think initially, that we wanted the company to take over all operations of the course, but then, a little bit further on, we talk about parsing it out. So are we looking for one company to come in and run the whole thing, or are we looking for, if we don't get that necessarily, that if somebody, we get a golf guy that comes in that doesn't want to do the catering, he brings in a partner to do that? Would that have to be included in one package?
I think preference will be given to the bidder who wants to do it comprehensively.
Do the whole thing, right.
Right.
But that's certainly an option if-
And someone may just bid to run the golf course, so then-
Right, so they may bid just the golf course.
Someone else may bid to just run the restaurant.
Right.
But it wouldn't be a partner, it would be a vendor.
Right.
That he, he or she, if he did.
Well, that's what I was saying, you could have two people that come in to work together.
You could, that's true.
One guy has catering experience, the other guy is the golfer.
Right.
We bring, the golf guy brings along the catering guy.
That's what I would think would happen.
Or you would have, my only issue with, if you have two, two people running it, then you have the issue of the golf guy wanting to do-
Coordination.
That's true.
Trying to do, you know, he wants to run an event, and the catering guy's already booked something.
Right.
So who's going to get priority? Is it going to be the guy booking the, going to be the catering guy, or is it going to be the golf guy?
That's something to be, we'd have to work out.
So that would be something I'd be concerned about, if they were, if they were two separate ones.
Along this guy.
Pardon me? That's right.
I have, I have two questions. The first question is, not so much that it's not enough time, but that it's a terrible time. You know, it's, the meeting is December 19th, the proposals are due January 5th. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but obviously I'm just throwing that out there. And my second question is, what do we envision, I think I know the answer to this, but I'd like to kind of hear people talk about it, what do we envision the relationship between this management company and our golf commission to be?
Right, that was my other question.
We envision that the golf commission, when, if that's enacted as an ordinance, will supervise this golf management company.
That's what I would-
They'll be responsible for the oversight.
Perfect.
If, if I could just get back to something Jerry said a few minutes ago about the town assuming the risk now, since the town is going to be receiving the revenue.
Right, right.
As I was reading through the insurance requirements of this manager, I started thinking, I started wondering how, how that will work. The manager will be required to carry insurance in all these different areas. And I know the town carries general liability insurance for the property, since the town's owns the property. But if you would just go over how, how a claim might work, is this a, is the town a co-insurer? Who has, I guess, who has-
I mean, if somebody's fall is injured on the property?
And it would be primary, our response, our insurance company would be pri, we own the property, somebody falls, it would be our insurance company, the manager, I'm not-
Even though we're requiring the manager to carry all this.
Well, I'm not sure how much-
No, I would, I would think that-
You know.
Yeah.
I think the manager would be primary.
They'd be responsible, but then I, I'd also want to protect our interests, maybe, I mean, there are forms that would make the, the operator primary and non-contributory, so if something happens, they're on it, we're not. Of course, if something's that bad, it'll go through the operator and come to us anyway, and we've got umbrella insurance, we've got that, but it would first go to the operator as the operator of the club, but then we'd always have liability, we can't just sign away our liability.
Right.
There's still going to be liability on our part.
I'll give you one example, it could be some negligence in the operation of the golf course, that would be the responsibility of the manager, if somebody there, or whatever happened. That would be his responsibility. If there was a defect in the property, you know, there was a hole there or something, that may be more our responsibility, but that, we're going to have insurance anyway, that'll be worked out.
Okay.
So that, I don't think that's going to be a big, a big problem.
Any way, you can't prevent somebody who's injured from going after everything.
Right, they'll sue, they'll sue the management company.
We've all gotten, we've all gotten those forms.
Right, right.
Right.
In terms of, you're, you're talking about the time, we've taken this up with our consultant, he feels that the holiday season is going to make a difference.
Because people who play golf aren't doing anything anyway.
Right, or just that this is something they do, I mean, these management companies, they see an opportunity, they'll, they'll come up with a proposal.
And he thinks we'll get three, four.
Much easier to find a management company.
That's what he's saying.
That's good.
A company that leases it, that assumes the responsibility.
Right, this is a lot less-
Looking for this kind of business.
All right, that's somewhat reassuring.
This is a lot less of a, a part of the task.
Just question, finding the best one for the right fit.
If, if we have nothing to do on December 19th at 10 AM, can we come to the pre-optional pre-proposal conference as sort of the-
Lawrence came to, you came to, which, well, I-
The expression of interest.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it might be very educational.
Yeah, I was there, you were there, yeah. For the, for the Dubai 2010.
Bring your fan, bring your fans.
Bring my golf clubs.
Just back to the golf commission for a second. Now, I'm just concerned that they be micromanaging the operation, and if I were coming in as the management company, and I don't know, I could want five or six or seven people over me, and then the town over that, and then, what would the role be? I think it would have, the role, as it's written today, is not, it's not, doesn't work for what we're looking to do. I don't see, because we're looking at a three-year minimum contract to begin with, and then two one-year contracts after that.
Right.
But a golf, the golf commission, as I read it, was to basically run the golf course. So if we're going to get a management company to run the golf course, I don't see a need, they were going to manage it, right? They were going to look at hiring, they were going to look at hiring a groundskeeper, they're going to look at doing all that stuff, and then, but now we're looking at bringing someone else to do that, so I think either it gets rewritten to, to fit over this, because I think right now, it doesn't fit over what we're looking to do, it doesn't fit over this RFP, unless I'm misreading it, but.
No, I think the, the proposed ordinance would allow the golf commission to oversee the operation. And we're going to get this response back, we may or may not accept what it is.
Right.
Hopefully the golf commission will be approved, it will go into effect in January, and then they'll have the oversight, they can work through a golf, a golf manager, which we're looking for here, or they could decide to do it themselves, and hire people for the town. We don't think that's necessarily a good way to proceed, we think it's better to have a company, so that company hires all these people, they become employees of that company rather than of the town.
Right, because I, I wouldn't think that, we talked about the golf commission going out and hiring, or interviewing for hire, a groundskeeper, of course, that would have to come through us, if they did that, if we went with the golf commission without this management company, but.
I think in the contract that will be negotiated, where, if this is the way we go, we'll have a provision in there that we're going to have input in who they're going to hire.
Yeah, it's actually in the RFP.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, that the town has input in.
So we're going to, we would, we would have sign up over who they hire?
I think of it as-
I mean, I would, I would think that if we're getting a management, now, this management, and I don't know how it works with management companies, but I would think if, they're going to come in with a group of people that they're going to run this course with, I wouldn't think they'd be bidding on this if they didn't have a groundskeeper, they'd never-
If you look at the current staffing section, it says that they have to provide a, a full staff transition plan, and this was another common thing that I saw a lot of our, I'm sorry, page six, three fifteen. That's the section.
Okay.
Probably hires.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
If you're done, Tom, I don't want to, you're, okay, all right. On, again, on page six, the decision, it's the four dash one, the last sentence, the decision by the town is subject to final town meeting approval?
No, that should be, that should be-
No, that's a good catch.
Is that true?
No, that's a good catch, that should be out.
Yeah, okay. I had some typos, which I'll give you, I'm not going to sit here and kill you up tonight.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
And again, my other question was on page fourteen. This, this allows the company, or bidder, successful bidder, to establish greens fees, schedules, and other fees for the facility. And I'd like to have that be subject to at least the approval of-
Where are you?
Page fourteen, second-
Oh, I got it, yep.
I, I- I, I think that that was one of the problems we had with a lot of people.
That should probably be, um-
Our, our present company set those and, um, number two.
Which, which point? Should be suggests.
Establish greens fees.
I think it's wrong.
I'm not comfortable having that company do that there.
Yeah, no, I had to do that, you could catch. Yeah.
I really, I got a lot of complaints from folks who had joined. Cause things kept going up and up and they were not happy, and I think that residents, there's no preference to Woodbridge residents in here. I think we, we really-
Right, and I think one of the others, one of the other issues they had was that-
That I had heard from people com, of course complaining.
Right, of course, you don't hear them, they're happy.
Right, but was that when they put out the, the price, uh, for residents?
Mm-hmm.
It was a preferred rate for residents, but then they were also offering that to other people who came from other clubs, some from Fairfield County.
Correct. Right.
Some from other local clubs, they were getting the resident-
Right, same, right.
Price. And people were concerned that they weren't getting the deal that they thought they were, because they knew of other people, and they talk, all these people talk.
Of course they do.
That, uh, there should be some preference to Woodbridge residents and that should be a pretty hard, uh, requirement of.
Well, I think that's where the commission comes in, should there be a golf. See, it is something akin to, uh, the library commission, which hasn't, which, I mean, the town has employees, but then the library commission approves the hiring of a, of a alarm system contractor or something. And, and so there are, you know, and, and that's, that's a management company for the alarm system that the town-
Right, yeah, I understand it, but I think if you look at the, that's a good example of the library, cause that's a business they have to run. But as far as the golf commission ordinance is written a lot more toward hands-on at the commission. And I'm not, I'm not necessarily sure that's what we're looking for if we already have a management company. So, that's my-
You see them as duplicating effort?
Pardon me?
You see them as duplicating effort, is that what you're saying?
I think the way it's written now, it's written as a management company. I think we initially went with the golf commission.
Okay.
Was initially, as I understood it, was to run the golf course. And to look toward hiring people and doing all that. And then, trying to figure out long-term what we wanted to do, long-term.
I thought it was more oversight. I don't think, I thought it was more oversight, like the fire commission oversees. I have, I have the same impression.
Or even the recreation commission oversees recreation, it's just like recreation.
That's what I thought.
Right, I just thought it was, right, but it just seemed, it seemed more detailed than that to me than the other commission.
But most things that the fire department does has to go to the commission prior to going to the board of selectmen. And I see it the same way, it would be a chain of command, I guess.
But what I'm hearing, I guess you said about, about things like establishing fees, I mean, you're right, you don't want, you wanna make sure that oversight exists.
Correct, absolutely.
Right, I, I don't have any sort of oversight, I just thought it was a little humorous.
That one issue was very important to me, because I heard a lot of folks that were very unhappy with-
Keep in mind, this is not a binding document on, on the bidders, you know, the bidders can't say-
Right, and it's gonna be a contract.
This is what you told me. Right, right, right.
The ultimate-
This is just a general summary.
They're making a proposal, then we negotiate that proposal.
But generically, that oversight is gonna be implemented.
And I wasn't certain about the fee then.
Right.
Yeah, that's a catch.
Yeah.
That was a good-
And I have some little typo thingies that I'm handing you the whole thing, so.
Yeah, you're fine. Yeah, okay.
That's my thing.
And then one other thing, with the, uh, the golf management, the consultant we're using now, Matt Galvin, I guess?
Yes.
What's, what's his company?
RDC Golf.
RDC Golf. So I know when we were dealing with our prior manager, that there was, he was not competing. Will he be eligible to bid on this?
RDC.